I'm going to call the meeting to order. Roll call. Wade.
Yep.
Townsend.
Here.
Quellhorst.
Here.
Elliott.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Craig, that's me, I'm here. And we're missing Mike Hench tonight. He is away at another meeting. So, next up on the agenda is a public discussion of any item not on the agenda. If anybody would like to address us on any topic that's not on the agenda tonight. We have a big audience. And I'm really sorry that I couldn't give you a meeting with like a long public hearing. You could sit here for three hours and listen to us. They are very interesting, those meetings. Okay, moving on. Agenda item number four, case number REZ 24-006. Anne.
Well, actually, I'm going to handle this one. It's a little bit unusual. And for those who I've not yet met, my name is Eric Goris. I'm the city attorney. I apologize for the downgrade in legal counsel to these meetings. I know you're used to Sarah Hectone, who left her office to spend more time with her family. We miss her dearly. And you will probably see how much we miss her as I move forward with this presentation. So, I'd like to give a little bit of the history about why tobacco regulation comes before you at this meeting, not something you are normally tasked with addressing. On April 2nd, at their city council meeting, the council voted to deny several tobacco permits, which was the first clue to staff that there was something up and that council wanted to discuss the issue of tobacco regulation as a council. We came back with a moratorium on their May 7th meeting. And of course, you folks are familiar with a moratorium. That is kind of putting the kibosh on all new tobacco permit applications at that point, so that the council would have time to consider how to regulate, if at all, tobacco permits. That moratorium runs through the end of this calendar year. They then engaged in several work sessions, the first being on July 16th. At that point, they tasked me with drafting three ordinance amendments. One is a zoning ordinance amendment that is before you for your consideration this evening, having to do with distance separations between retailers and each other, and also retailers and either K through 12 schools or university property. That was the first ordinance amendment. The second was having to do with putting a cap on tobacco permits issued throughout the city. And the third had to do with banning kratom, a substance that I, at that point, knew very little about and still have much to learn. Ultimately, through a couple of additional work sessions on August 6th and August 20th, the council directed to not move forward with the permit cap, but to move forward with the other two. That is a kratom ban and the zoning ordinance that is before you. So, of course, zoning ordinances such as this need to go through playing and zoning, and so that's why we're here today. Hopefully, you had a chance to, in your packet, take a look at the draft ordinance amendment I put together with the heavy assistance of our urban planning staff. I could not have done it without them. Just to make it clear, tobacco retailer use is not something that's currently regulated under our zoning. That is a use that we've had to create in order to effectuate the change that council would like to consider. So, you know, there's nothing in the zoning code at present for you to look at, to compare, to see how this is going to fit in with present regulation. There is no present regulation for tobacco insofar as zoning is concerned. So, the ordinance structure is modeled on alcohol zoning. And by that, I mean, there are, at present, a couple of different separation distance measures in our code. One is 500 feet between drinking establishments, that is bars, places that have licenses for on-premises consumption. And the other is 1,000-foot separation distance for off-premises consumption, that is liquor stores or places that sell tobacco or alcohol for off-premises consumption. I think there are a couple of other caveats in there about accessory uses and so forth that gets to be a little tricky in a lot of different ways, actually, with alcohol. But tobacco is quite a bit more straightforward. Either you have a tobacco permit, or you don't. That's all there is to it. We included some grandfather provisions, as we are apt to do, on zoning measures, because as you can probably imagine, there are a number of retailers that are within 500 feet of each other at present, or are within 500 feet of a school or university property. And so, we called out how those would be addressed. Essentially, we gave them 60 days to allow their permit to lapse. That is, if their permit lapses for more than 60 days, they lose their grandfather rights. Or to cease selling tobacco, you can imagine a rehabilitation or remodeling project, for example, where you would close down the shop and not sell for 90 days. They would also lose grandfather rights if their tobacco permit is revoked, or they just change their use. If there's a tobacco retailer that decides to sell T-shirts tomorrow, well, then they lose their grandfather rights tomorrow. And that's it. I wanted to show you a map, which I will do with Anne's assistance, that should display the present, whoop, the present location of both school property and current tobacco retailers, of which there are presently 62. So, for clarity, the blue dots are, and I'll zoom in just a little bit, so it's a little, you can kind of differentiate a little more. The, I'll say solid blue squares are retailers, tobacco retailers. The lighter blue surrounding is a 500-foot buffer around those retailers. The yellow property are either university property or K through 12 school property with a 500-foot buffer around them. You can see areas in here, it gets pretty busy, because there are a lot of different parcels. And so, as a result, the yellow gets a little darker, because there's several layers of yellow buffer, unlike over here. I want to make sure you can see my cursor. You can? Like, unlike over here at City High, where it's just, you know, one parcel, one layer surrounding it that offers a separation. If you're interested, we can turn layers on and off. For example, I can turn off the buffer around retailers, and you could see what would remain. Or, we could turn off the school and university buffers, and you could see just retailers and the spaces that would be available for them. So, as you can probably see, in the downtown area, there would likely not be an ability of any new retailers to come in, with some exceptions in areas kind of in between. But, you know, in other parts of the city, there would be a little bit more opportunity. But I will turn this back on again, so you can get that overview, which includes the school and university property and their buffers, because that's what the council, after discussion, decided to put forth for your consideration. Insofar as staffing is concerned, because the clerk's office already does tobacco permit applications and manages all of that, they would likely just continue managing this part of it. All they would really need to do is type in an address and then see whether it falls under one of these buffers, or if it was in the clear, and thus could be approved. So, there would be a little bit of additional staff burden in the clerk's office, but not much, and probably not any for urban planning staff. Staff does recommend approval, but I would be happy to hear any of your questions and address them as best I could.
Is this a new issue?
A new issue, unless you're going to answer that.
Are there more tobacco retailers?
Oh, there has been an increase in tobacco retailers recently, both in total, insofar as tobacco retailers are concerned, which of course includes convenience stores, grocery stores, drug stores, you know, a lot of businesses for which the sale of tobacco and tobacco products is not their primary concern, as well as vape shops, which are, you know, pretty much everything they sell would fall under the licensing. And to be clear, the tobacco permits cover both traditional tobacco products, like cigarettes and cigars, pipe tobacco, but also vapes, alternative nicotine delivery systems, any of that. Not kratom. I mentioned kratom, so I don't want to conflate those. But, all those other things are covered by a single tobacco permit.
I have a couple of questions for you. So, thank you very much for the hard work and thoughtful proposal to address what I think is a pretty important issue. You mentioned alternative nicotine products, and I noticed that the definition of tobacco sales-oriented business would include any business that sells alternative nicotine products. Now, I looked at that definition in the Iowa code, and it seems pretty broad, like it might, you know, pull in, for example, Target, which sells, you know, nicotine lozenges. Is that accurate? And if so, is that the intent of the ordinance?
Well, I would need to look to see whether nicotine lozenges fall under the definition of products that require a tobacco permit. But frankly, I wouldn't need to look very hard, because if they don't, then they wouldn't need a tobacco permit, and none of this would apply. I mean, the beauty of the definitions here is that if you need a tobacco permit, then this applies to you. If you do not need a tobacco permit, then it does not.
Yeah, I guess I'm just trying to understand whether these restrictions would apply to, you know, less like zin or something like that, and more like, you know, common products that would be sold at a grocery store or pharmacy?
I'm sorry, you mentioned, the first couple items you mentioned, like zin, did you say?
Yeah, so I-
I'm not familiar with that.
It's like, alternative to chewing tobacco, you know, it's more of like a recreational nicotine product, as opposed to like lozenges and gums, which would typically be used for smoking cessation.
Yeah. Well, I could look at Iowa Code, Chapter 453A, which defines some of those products, and it would probably not include brand names, like you're mentioning. But, the kind of body of products would maybe cover it. I can circle back.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
And then, just one other question. If this were to pass, do I understand correctly that new tobacco shops would need to seek approval for a provisional use from the Board of Adjustment? Or would they just go to the city clerk?
They would go to the city clerk. Now, well, you'll see in the ordinance that there are a number of charts that talk about whether they would be allowable under certain zones. And there, I would depend on the planning staff to help me with the process by which they would secure the approvals that they need, if it's a provisional use, let's say, or something like that, in a particular zone. But, insofar as the clerk's concerned, in issuing the tobacco permit, it would just be, are they within 500 feet? Yes or no?
Would there be any mechanism for an exception to that rule?
I'm sorry?
Would there be any mechanism for an exception to that rule?
Exceptions to the 500-foot rule?
Right.
Other than grandfathering?
Right.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So, if a company that has been grandfathered in goes out of business, or for some reason can't continue to operate, it's my understanding that no one can come in and replace that shop. Is that correct?
That would only be correct if there is a lapse of a permatee of more than 60 days and/or a cessation of sales for more than 90 days. That is, if, let's say, a convenience store went out of business, and a month later got bought up by, you know, Casey's or something, and Casey's opened up shop and got a permit, then that would be fine.
Hmm, okay. And so far, there are 62 permits?
There are 62 permits at present, yes.
And you're only allowing 63?
No, we're not. One of the things that the council wanted me to draft was a cap on permits, and they chose not to move forward with that. So, there is no cap at present.
So, we could have-
You could have 100. Yeah. Well, I mean, I shouldn't say 100. It could be any number. It could be much more than we have now.
One on every block. There have to be 500 feet.
Well, it couldn't be on every block, because that would be within 500 feet of each other. Yeah.
Any other questions?
I guess the one thing I noticed when I was looking at the map was just kind of surprised that, like, Hy-Vee was on there and grocery stores, you know, I was kind of thinking vape shops were what we're trying to limit with this legislation, is, was there any discussion or consideration of, like, it doesn't seem like anyone would want to limit, like, having another grocery store within a certain radius of vape shop?
Yes, there was some discussion of that. We met with a couple times Susan Veleta, who's a Johnson County Public Health educator. And based on her research, she indicated that, in fact, she's more concerned with the convenience stores and the grocery stores, because there's greater exposure to children. That is, children go into those places all the time. They're going in to get a pop at a convenience store, going in with mom and dad to buy groceries, or whatever the case may be. Whereas, it would be surprising and unusual for a child to wander into a vape shop. And so, for them, it's about exposure and kind of normalizing of use that leads to, well, greater problems down the line. And, like, when we were pursuing the idea of a cap, it was all about availability. That is, if there's a higher density and higher availability of exposure, particularly to young people, then they're more likely to become users ultimately.
Do you have, out of curiosity, do you have any idea, like, are most grocery stores also have tobacco permits?
I believe most grocery stores also have tobacco permits, yes. I think most convenience stores also. I haven't checked to see that they all do, but it'd be my expectation that certainly most of them would.
So, the Hy-Vee drug that's up on First Avenue is certainly within 500 feet of Regina. So, if that went out of business, unless someone else came along and bought the business or applied for a permit within-
Or secured a permit within-
Secured a permit within 90 days.
Well, within 60 days of a lapsed permit. So, it would only be 60 days they would have to come in and get a new permit, yes. So, you're right, if they, I haven't checked, let's assume that that place is within 500 feet. Then, yeah, that's right. They would lose their grandfather rights.
Okay. And the impetus for this concern from council is a health one, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So, kind of along the lines of the Drug Town scenario. So, like a changeover from an Amaco to Casey's. So, if there was a lapse, and so the Casey's couldn't take over and get grandfathered in, if they exceeded that 60-day window, is that right?
If they exceeded 60 days without a license or without a tobacco permit. That's right, yes. Well, they could still, of course, take over as Casey's and do everything else they would do with their business, but just not sell tobacco.
So then, if there was also another, let's say, make-believe Pearson's was going to become a Hawkeye truck stop, like we had Corville, then they would be ineligible, because they'd fall within that 500-feet rule, right?
Well, I missed a location you mentioned.
The Pearson's, or right next to the-
Oh, right, right, yes. I'm with you now. Yes, I suspect that they would be within 500 feet of the Urban Fuel Convenience Store up there.
So, they would, so there's no exception process? It's just 500 feet, yes or no?
Correct.
Members, any other comments or questions for-
I was just looking for the answer to, now I've forgotten which of you asked the question about the alternative nicotine product. So, here's the list under state code, which is incorporated through this ordinance. Alternative nicotine product means a product not consisting of or containing tobacco that provides for the ingestion, ingestion, sorry, into the body of nicotine, whether by chewing, so nicotine gum, for example, chewing, absorbing, dissolving, inhaling, snorting, or sniffing, or by any other means. Alternative nicotine product does not include cigarettes, tobacco products, or vapor products. Each of those also require a tobacco permit. Or a product that is regulated as a drug or device by the U.S. Food and Drug Administration under Chapter 5 of the yada, yada. So, yes, so it sounds like, again, I'm not familiar with zin or those other products, but, you know, it appears that any kind of nicotine gum or anything like that would require a tobacco permit.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I got a few more questions, unless anybody else-
Go ahead.
All right. So, let's say a location had to move because of loss of lease or something like that. Then, by default, then do they have to follow under the new, new rule that, as soon as they would move locations, they'd have to be greater than 500 feet from a grandfather would no longer apply to being in that conflicting or non-conforming?
Yes, that's right. Because, of course, you know, zoning regulation is about the use and not the user. And so, that was one of the questions that was specifically asked at the council meeting, like, well, what if it's, you know, tobacco retailer A wants to move from location B to location C? Do we give it to them? And they said, no. You know, unless it's already, you know, outside of 500 feet ineligible, then sure, of course. But, yeah, the whole point, of course, is to try to thin out the concentration of these folks.
And was there any explanation on why, I've seen other locations that have kind of done youth education facilities from 18 and younger, and then have not treated college or universities the same? Was there any explanation on why university or 18-plus was treated the same way?
Yes, because whereas you used to only need to be 18 to consume tobacco products, you now have to be 21. And of course, probably half or more of the student body at the University of Iowa is under 21.
Yeah, probably.
Could take a survey, but-
Raise your hand.
And then, when there was the alcohol, the change, I remember back to the old field house, the old union, and it kind of locked those locations in to continue to use. Essentially, they went from owner to owner, always remained the same use, just because they got grandfathered in. So, was there any kind of consequences or anything that was changed differently later to kind of mitigate that forever location?
Well, as you're probably aware, there was a change ultimately with zoning to accommodate the tailwind project that had to do with, you know, historic areas on the Ped Mall and that kind of thing. So, you know, of course, there can always be flexibility in the future, where council can just, you know, make an amendment if there's a project that they think is worthy of that.
I think that's it.
Well, had we? Is that it?
That's it.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Susan, we need a public comment first.
Public comment, okay. Sorry, I'm standing up here. Anyone who would like to address this issue can come to the podium, write your name, and address the commission?
And do I just say any one of these numbers, or is it already on?
It's on. It's on.
Oh, well, that's great. It has to do with the height of the podium.
Just state your name when you start there.
Oh, that makes sense. Fancy. I just wanted to ask if there's been any research on how this is going to affect the-
Sorry, can you state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Chris John Nixon. I'm a student at the College of Law, as you may have guessed. So, I was wondering if there's been any research on the increase in property value that the smoke shop owners might have, since they already have these locations that are close to the schools?
We haven't done any, well, I'm sorry, should I answer?
Sure.
Okay. Our office hasn't done any research on that, but we're cognizant of the changes because of the alcohol one, upon which this tobacco ordinance is largely modeled. We're aware that, kind of like Commissioner Wade made reference to, are we kind of locking in some locations, because if they ever stop that use, they will lose those grandfather rights? I'm aware of landlords who require, as part of their lease with their tenants, that they continue to engage in the sale of alcohol and so forth, so as to preserve that right. In fact, we've encountered some gamemanship for liquor stores, where a tenant tried to move next door, well, did move next door, and somehow tried to change the use before he left, so as to prevent competition for himself next door, to no avail. So, yes, you're right, you're asking the right question, kind of like Commissioner Wade made reference to, about whether we're locking in uses. There is some danger of that.
Okay. And then, I did just have one more question. With the licenses, is there currently a limit to how much product they could have? Like, could one of these places expand upwards if they have a tall building?
Oh, that would be an expansion of a non-conforming use and would not be allowed.
Okay, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Does anyone else want to address the commission?
Okay.
If they want us to answer the question.
Yeah, okay. Counsel.
Before you speak, I was asking, Anne, at our council meetings, we don't take questions, we take comments.
Right.
And so, I guess my question to you, since I'm new, is that true here, or?
Well, it is true.
Okay.
But, I was being flexible, so. The chair, temporary chair, decided to, they were good questions, we'll let it go.
Okay.
But, generally speaking, in a public hearing, you provide information, and you can ask questions, but you don't get answers.
I appreciate the opportunity to ask a question. I'm Jonathan Llewellyn. I'm a student at the College of Law. I was wondering if there's been any consideration to the effect this ordinance could have on currently vacant properties with infrastructure for gas station use? I'm thinking of the closed gas station on Mormon Trek and the closed gas station downtown. Is there a risk that we'd be locking out the reopening of those businesses with this ordinance?
I'm not sure the council would use the word "risk" to characterize that, but yes, there is some possibility that if this passes and the use ceases for, well, there remains a tobacco permit in place for the former come-and-go at Mormon Trek and Benton. I don't recall if there's one at the intersection of Burlington and Madison, which is the other one to which you're referring, I believe. And so, I don't know. I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Sure.
Hi, so I'm Dana Heberkamp, also a student of the College of Law. And I had a couple of questions. And so, as per the Iowa code, that, under the alternative tobacco products, or nicotine products, excuse me, nicotine patches would also fall under that definition. And so, is there a benefit for restricting the sale of nicotine patches, that an exception would not, like, be a better idea to allow the sale for, say, reducing the usage of nicotine in the first place?
I'm not certain of your premise, in that there is an exception for products that are regulated as a drug or device by the U.S. Food and Drug Administration. So, I don't know if nicotine patches fall under that category, in which case it would not apply. But if they do not, and they otherwise fall under the definition of alternative nicotine products, then this ordinance would apply to their application.
I believe it would fall under alternative nicotine, like, products, just because it said any sort of consumption, including absorption specifically, was mentioned. So, I'd imagine that is what's-
Well, that's the first part of that definition. And then, the second part is the exception.
But there's no intent to make an exception for, say, things like that, preventative-
By the state or by the city?
By the city.
No, the city is bound by the state's regulations regarding alternative nicotine products and how they are defined.
Well, I mean, specifically for this new zoning permission, like-
Sure.
Why not make an exception for products that are aimed at reducing the use of nicotine, rather than having a blanket statement preventing this sale of nicotine and tobacco products?
Well, because it's cleaner, and easier to apply, for one. And I guess we're defaulting to the state's definition. There's a reason why some products are regulated and require a tobacco permit, and that some are not. And so, we're just tracking the state code in that way.
Okay, thank you. And then, in addition to that, so, the majority of individuals that start smoking to begin with are individuals who are interacting with already people that smoke, such as, like, family and friends, things of that nature. So, how would you view, like, restricting the locations themselves as a way that would actually reduce, like, children and the influence of, like, nicotine usage in the first place? If that's, if just seeing the locations in themselves is not typically what's actually getting them to start smoking in the first place? getting them to start smoking in the first place?
Well, it's difficult for us to regulate tobacco use within the home, and it sounds like that's what you're describing, and so we are not.
Right. So could you describe to me a little bit more about why the locations themselves?
I think your time's about up.
Okay.
And did you write your name down?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
I didn't realize it was all the law students who
Right.
That I was breaking the rules for. Okay, do you have a comment? I think we're about done with questions.
Hi, I'm Jenna Dearoff. I'm also a law student. I just wanted to put forth the idea that perhaps this measure might be a little bit counterintuitive. I know we were speaking about how many grocery stores sell tobacco products, but primarily this seems like it's targeted at, you know, your typical vape shop. But because it's modeled off of alcohol-prohibitive measures, I think that it's worth considering that, you know, if you look at how the city is set up, a lot of, like, the bars and liquor stores are concentrated in the downtown area, and that this measure, by making it so that it's basically prohibiting any new stores from being in the downtown area, would, might encourage people to open new stores in the peripheral of the city, which would, in effect, spread out tobacco use across the whole city, instead of maybe concentrating it in more of that downtown nightlife area. Thanks.
Anybody else?
Just to, Anne, maybe it's a question for Anne, kind of in response to that. It would be governed by the uses, right? Within, like, it wouldn't be necessarily in a residential zone, it's not permitted by right?
Yeah, that's true. The, both alcohol-oriented retail and tobacco, as was proposed with the tobacco, would only be allowed in non-residential zones.
Thanks.
Okay, I'm going to close the comment period. Thank you. And just for your information, if you feel strongly about this, if this is approved by the commission, even if it isn't, it goes back to the City Council, and it's the City Council that approves, you know, actually approves a zoning change, not this board. I mean, we can, we are approving it by our body, but it doesn't become law, law, is that the right word? Until the City Council approves it, so.
At three readings.
For your information, right? Did I say that right, Eric?
You did, in three separate readings at the City Council.
Right. So there'll be three meetings where you can voice your opinions and ask questions that won't be answered.
It will not be answered, but you can also send council an email to share your thoughts, too. They read all those as well.
If you send a message to council prior to the meeting
Right.
And they're intrigued by your question, they'll ask Eric to answer it for them.
That's true.
Okay, back to, do I have a motion? We had Elliot, and I'm trying to remember who the second one. I did. Is that okay? Any question, any comments from commission members? Chad? Chad's got a comment.
Sure, I'll go first. So I generally support the proposal, but would oppose the motion because I think that we should exclude alternative nicotine products, or at least tobacco cessation products like gums and lozenges. My concern is that this definition of alternative nicotine products sweeps pretty broadly and make it, would make it more difficult for businesses like pharmacies, for example, or Target to enter downtown in other areas. And then, relatedly, the, you know, impetus behind this measure is to protect public health, and I don't see the same public health concerns with lozenges, gums, and other tobacco cessation products as I do with vapes and cigarettes, for example. So for those reasons, you know, I support the notion behind the proposal, but don't support this particular motion.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I appreciate you catching that, because that's something I would not have realized, the Nicoderm patches and so on.
Well, I don't think we know for sure that that's the case. Remember the exception, I mean, I don't know enough about nicotine patches, but I assume they're somehow regulated by the FDA.
Right, I assume that as well, but do not know that to be a fact.
Right, right. I mean
It's something that we could get further information on, though, right?
I believe so. Do you know that Target sells those downtown at present?
I don't. I'm just, you know, Target and CVS are what I have in mind, as well as, you know, other businesses that might be similarly situated, that are looking to do business downtown. You know, I wouldn't want to get in a situation where we have, you know, a new, like Walgreens, for example, that's interested in doing business downtown, but either couldn't do so or would get caught up in a lot of red tape.
We're just checking the map, which you can see before you, to see if they presently have a tobacco permit. It looks like the answer is no.
Check the Walgreens and their CVS out on I don't think any of them. Muscatine and First Avenue.
I think they sell cigarettes.
Yeah, but if they sell cigarettes, they'll show up.
They sell cigarettes. I think CVS does not sell cigarettes, but Walgreens does.
Well, there's the CVS out there, too.
Yeah, they do. No, they don't.
Yeah, and the CVS is
Well, you're hunting for that. I just want to say, I would be in favor of this. I think 500 feet is not a long way to walk for what you need, if you can't find the products that you're looking for. I don't think we need more of those in the downtown area. Looks like we're already, already have an abundance of the vape shops and tobacco shops and places that offer those things.
Yeah, I think, I mean, my concern at least is less with foreclosing another vape shop, which I agree that we don't need more of, and more that you foreclose a business that, you know, may happen to sell tobacco cessation products. You know, like, Target comes to mind, although I appreciate that it doesn't appear that Target currently has a tobacco license, or, you know, like a CVS, for example. You know, if the city attorney is of the opinion that those sorts of businesses wouldn't be privated by this ordinance, then, you know, I'd be comfortable supporting it.
I was just interacting with my friend Google. And it indicates, according to the FDC, the CDC, that nicotine patches are an FDA-approved medicine, and nicotine gum, also according to the Center for Disease Control, is an FDA-approved medicine as well. So both would fall under the exception of alternative nicotine product.
Okay. Any other comments by commission members before?
Well, that, just to clarify, you're saying that would mean that they do not need a tobacco permit to sell it?
That is my reading of the definition of alternative nicotine products, and that seems to be, well, I'm sorry, did you say you know that Target sells those products downtown, or not sure?
No, I don't know for sure.
Well, it appears that Target does not have, the downtown Target does not have a permit to sell, and if they do, then that would be fine. That would be unregulated by the Tobacco Chapter.
I guess I'm curi, I support as well the intent behind this and reducing the number of vape shops, especially downtown. My only concern is about kind of the, what Counselor Wade, or not Counselor, Commissioner Wade brought up with, you know, kind of institutionalizing these locations as forever a vape shop, basically. But, so my question is, if that becomes a problem, is there, I mean, with, you mentioned that the Tailwinds Project had an exception for alcohol, I wasn't aware of that. How did, like, what is the process for changing in the future if it?
Well, it would be an ordinance amendment, and because this is a zoning ordinance, they would need to come before you, again, before council took it up, if there was a change to something like this. But, yeah, in the case of alcohol, again, it was about separation distance and so forth, but, you know, there was this product, or project that looked really great, and they, in order to make it work, needed to sell alcohol for on-premises consumption, and they were non-conforming. So council decided to make a change to allow for that project.
Did that affect, like, future, like, can someone else open a bar next door now, or was it just that project specific?
No, I think it was, well, it doesn't ever identify a specific project, but it was written to allow for that project. I don't remember all the criteria, but it had to do with a building that has been vacant for at least some period of time, I don't remember if it's a year or two years or something like that. It's in a historic district, I think. I can't remember if there are other criteria that fell into that, but it was rather exacting to narrow the focus.
Thank you.
And insofar as your question about institutionalizing, I mean, you're absolutely right, I mean, that was something that, at the staff level, we considered as well. Of course, you also have to consider the alternative, and that there will just be more of them, you know?
Yeah.
And that's why I'm in favor of this ordinance, zoning change, because, you know, it's always a trade-off, and you have to trade something away to get something that you feel is important enough, and I think in this case, it's a fair trade.
I think, I think the intention is probably good. I think the devil's in the details, I think it has some unintended consequences. I also think the 90-day for cease the sale of tobacco products, I think there's a little on the short side. I'd hate to have a business get hit with a tornado or natural disaster, and then, as a result, lose their license or lose their ability to sell, not lose their license, but their, their ability to sell. So those are a little problematic, I guess. I can't say that they're the end of it, but I think they're problematic in execution. I did not ask this earlier, I don't know if I could still ask it, is there a reason why they did not take a different approach, like a per capita permit approach, or any of the other approaches, and really focused on zoning mechanism?
When you say per, do you mean a permit cap?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Well, at one point, they were considering that, and that's why they had me draft one, which I did. But then ultimately, they, I think, looked at the map, or a county version of this map, and saw that they thought that the zoning would really address their concerns, and it wouldn't prevent a new, let's say, a new grocery store from going in in an area that maybe is underserved at present, you know, part of a food desert or something, and if that grocery store felt like they needed to sell tobacco in order to pencil out and make a go of it, that that was probably a net benefit, and they didn't want a permit cap to get in the way of something like that.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, which is to approve this? Say aye.
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 Those opposed?
I'll give the nay.
Okay. So this now will go on to the City Council.
Okay, thank you.
Agenda item number five, consideration of meeting minutes, from June 26, 2024. If anyone can remember. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Say aye.
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 Meeting minutes are approved. Planning and zoning information, I thought maybe we'd start by asking our new member to tell us about himself.
Oh, sure.
And we can, I don't know, we want to tell him about ourselves or not?
I would love that. Yes, I'm Steve Miller. I'm an architect in town at Slingshot Architecture, just really interested in planning and zoning, looking forward to learning more. And my first city board or commission was public art. I did that for three, two, just over, I was in my third session, or whatever you call it, term, thank you, when this opportunity came up, so I applied, because I've been kind of wanting to do planning and zoning for a long time, so, yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Maggie Elliott, I've been on the commission, I think, a year.
More than that.
A year and a couple days. And I'm learning a lot, I'm just interested in the city and being part of it.
Awesome.
Yeah, my name is Scott Quahurst. I'm an attorney here in town, I've been on the commission for about a year.
Susan Craig, I was a city employee for decades, and I was always interested in planning and zoning, and so took the opportunity, when I retired, to apply and was appointed, and this is my fifth year, my last year of my term. I mean, when I started, we had Zoom meetings because of COVID, and it went a year before we had an in-person meeting.
Next, Billy Townsend, I worked for you for almost 30 years, retired about eight years ago, and this is my second five years, beginning of my second five years on the planning and zoning commission.
And I'm Chad Wade, been with the commission about, I don't know, a year and a half, I think. Work for an automotive manufacturer company, and have some properties in town, so that's what kind of drew me to P&amp;Z.
Okay, any other, any other P&amp;Z information?
The two rezonings that you considered in June were both approved, the 1215 Camp Cardinal Road and 2255 North Dubuque Road for the school district property.
Any other information for the good of the cause? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.